All right, it's seven oh one, we're gonna start tonight's regular meeting, November eighteenth, twenty nineteen. If I can roll call please.
Alderman Borman?
Yes.
Alderman Hudson?
Here.
Alderman Motley?
Here.
Alderman Wilkins? Alderman Rogers? Alderman Madley?
Yep. So if I get everybody's hand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of no other, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everyone for attending, and first we have our list of presidential, the presidential of the annual budget for fiscal year twenty eighteen nineteen by Williams Keepers.
Alright, good evening, everyone. My name is Amanda Schultz, and I'm an audit partner with Williams Keepers in Columbia. And we recently completed our annual financial statement audit of the city's financial statements as of and for the year ended March thirty first, two thousand nineteen. So I'd like to present our summary audit report to you all this evening. You should have two separate blue books in front of you. One does include the summary audit report, as well as the audited financial statements. The other book includes the two letters that we issue as a result of the audit, the auditor's communication letter, and the management letter. So again, I'll just be going over the summary audit report that you have in front of you, which hits the highlights of all the reports we issue as a result of the audit. So if you turn to the first page of that summary audit report, we have some summarized information about the audited financial statements. Again, the city's fiscal year ended March thirty first, two thousand nineteen, was what was included in our audit. Highlights of the audit report are that we issued an unmodified or a clean opinion on the financial statements. That is the best opinion that you can get, and it means that the users of the city's financial statements can rely on them, as well as the notes that support the financial statements. Management is ultimately responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements. It is a common practice for us as auditors to assist in the preparation of the financial statements, but they were reviewed and approved by the management. We use our judgment in determining how to audit the city. And I like to kind of give that reminder each year. We perform a risk assessment process on the city's balances, transactions, processes, and controls. And we focus our attention on areas where the financial statements could be misstated. So that means we don't test everything, we don't test every account balance or every transaction class, but we do enough work in order to be able to give that unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statements. As part of our audit, we evaluated accounting policies, accounting estimates, and the overall financial statement presentation. So another reminder, the financial statements include two different sets of financial statements. That's why they're so thick here in this blue book. There are government-wide financial statements, which puts everything that the city has together. So they are full accrual, and according to generally accepted accounting principles, they include all of the city's funds, as well as capital assets, long-term debt, other liabilities, everything the city has is reported in those government-wide financial statements. And there are also funds financial statements, which are separated into governmental funds, for which revenue usually comes from taxes and other general sources. And those are modified accrual basis statements, they have more near-term focus. And there are proprietary funds, where the revenue primarily comes from user charges. Those are primarily the utilities, and those use the full accrual basis of the calendar. So on page two of the summary audit report, we have summarized the highlights from the financial statements. These are presented on a government-wide basis, indicating where everything's put together. But you can see the governmental and business-type activities reported separately here. And again, this is summarized at a fairly high level for both fiscal years two thousand nineteen and two thousand eighteen. Just to give some comparative information, between the two years, current and other assets were fairly stable. Capital assets increased by approximately one and a half million during fiscal year two thousand nineteen. That was due to additions totaling approximately two point four million, which was offset by depreciation expense totaling approximately one million dollars. That line for deferred outflows of resources, that is kind of like a prepaid expense. Those are related to the city's participation in the loggers' pension plan, and those amounts will be recognized as pension expense in the future. So the decrease of approximately a hundred and twenty-seven thousand there is related to actuarial calculations that are provided by loggers, as well as contributions that the city made to loggers subsequent to the measurement date of the actuaries' calculations. So really just timing differences there. Total liabilities increased by approximately one point two million due to new bonds and leases payable to the city in turn to during fiscal year two thousand nineteen. And that deferred inflows of resources line is also related to the city's participation in loggers, and will actually reduce pension expense in the future. And again, those are based on actuary calculations, and are really just due to timing. On page three, we have some highlighted financial information from the statements of activities, again presented on a government-wide basis. But you can see the breakdown of the governmental and business-type activities. Total revenues were stable, but total expenses did increase by approximately eight hundred and ninety-four thousand. Most of the increases are found in the general government, public works, and culture and recreation spending lines. So I know that was a very high-level overview of the city's financial statements for fiscal year two thousand nineteen. We're obviously several months into fiscal year twenty, so I didn't want to go into too much detail on the last fiscal year, but are there any questions about the audited financial statements before I report on our letters that we issue as a result of the audit? The next report that we issue is our auditor's communication letter. And if you want to see the full letter, it's included in the second blue book that you have in front of you. But this letter consists of comments about the audit process and its results that are required under our professional standards to be communicated to you all as the Board of Aldermen of the city. So some highlights are that we didn't note any transactions that we consider both unusual and significant, and there was no change in accounting policies during the year. So what that means is although numbers change each fiscal year, there was nothing that was reported or accounted for differently during the year, as has been in prior years. We evaluated the estimates affecting the financial statements and found them reasonable in relation to the financial statements. We also evaluated the disclosures, and found them to be neutral, consistent, and clear. And all of the required disclosures to support the financial statements are included in the audited financial statements. On page four, we didn't encounter any difficulties in dealing with management in performing our audit. Heather and Tara and their team are great to work with. The completion of our audit was delayed due to a few factors, which we've listed here, and they're explained further in our auditor's communication. And we didn't have any disagreements with management on accounting or accounting issues. So overall, a fairly clean letter. Last but not least is our management letter, which is used to communicate any findings we may have about the city's internal controls. So the scope of the financial statement audit is obviously to give an opinion on the financial statements, and not to give an opinion on internal control. But when we perform our risk assessment process and look at internal control of our financial reporting, if we identify any material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, or just best practice-type recommendations, we'll include them in this letter. So this year, we had included a few significant deficiencies. Two are continuing recommendations related to the preparation of financial statements and network access, primarily to the city's utility billing system. We do have one new significant deficiency this year regarding bank reconciliations, recommending that they are being performed monthly, and on a timely basis, and being reviewed by someone other than the preparer. And we also have a few best practice-type recommendations that are continuing recommendations that were in our letter before, regarding the Summit General Ledger that the city uses for its accounting software. There are some fund accounting issues with that, but we're hoping those will be resolved if the city did go through a chart of account condition during fiscal year two thousand nineteen, so that may not be an issue going forward. And then also a comment regarding best practices on internal inter-funds balances. Any questions about any of those reports?
I have a question for you.
Sure.
When you talked about what you encountered, no significant difficulties in dealing, we spoke on the phone, I believe, here, a week or so ago.
A couple weeks ago, yeah.
And one of the things that was painful, and becomes painful for us every year, is the accrual process, where we accrue, and people may know what this is, but versus cash-based accounting versus accrual. Accrual is really good for one day of the year. And it's a lot of work that goes into that.
Yeah, there's a lot of work that goes into showing a snapshot of the balance since July thirty first.
Is that fair to say? It's a one-day
Yes.
true accounting of every day.
Yeah.
Which is very painful and very expensive. And so there's costs associated with that that aligning and doing, switching from the cash basis, if I read this properly, to the cost that we have to spend in our audit. Is that fair to say?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. It's certainly a decision that management of the city or the board needs to ultimately decide on if you all want to. You're used to seeing cash basis financial statements on a monthly basis at your meetings, so these year-end accrual entries that include all of the gas being adjustments that are required for governmental entities. You guys have only seen these one time a year, and it does take a significant amount of work, which Heather and Tara can attest to, to get here.
Unbelievable time, time granted, I mean, is that fair to say? I would rather break it up, pause in the moment, where it would show us both the difficulties of what we do and what we get for it. So the question that we, I've talked to a little bit internally here with Tara and Heather and so forth was, is there something that mandates that we do accrual for us to get funding or to be proper for somebody's inspection? And we don't have anything like that, is what we decide. So that's something for us to discuss moving forward, of how we will keep our books. Do we want to just go to a cash basis type bookkeeping system versus an accrual, which we end up doing a bunch of heavy lifting and a lot of terribly hard work and hours and expense, where it's be exactly dead-on, exactly to the penny, one day of the year.
I do have a call into a financial advisor with Pepper Jaffrey. Talked to him, just because he's helping us with our revenue bonds. And I want to make sure that we don't mess anything up going forward, because we do have some significant projects coming up that we still have to get funding for. So I need to call him back and see what his opinion is.
Based on the current agreements that are in place, and again, we're not here to give a legal opinion, but it looks like some of your done agreements do require an audit, but it does not specify whether it's cash basis versus the full accrual. And we would just recommend if you guys ultimately decide to move to a cash basis or modify cash basis form of reporting, you still keep track of your capital assets, you know, you use asset keeper to keep track of all of that with the depreciation schedules. I would keep up with that, just in the event that a few years down the road, if you decide to go back to GAAP, you'll still have that record, and it won't be, you know, difficult to go back several years and reaccount that. So, yeah, and we're happy to consult with you as you guys are making your decisions. Any other questions on that?
No, I'd just like to point out that this was Tara's first audit, and she did not pull her hair out, so I think it was a success.
Well, she did tear her bangs off.
There were a couple things I just kind of eat in and out of, and I'll figure. There's a lot of, a lot of stuff going on. And I said, what's going on? And it's playing to me that...
We just threw into the lions' den.
Yeah.
We work together on that.
Yeah, so we appreciate all of the assistance that we received during the audit, and appreciate the opportunity to do the work, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We had to fill in for Phyllis, and something's gone missing.
Well, it's not happening.
No, it was, it was...
Is it for B? So just A, or do you mean we're gonna talk about B tonight?
We're gonna do, yeah.
B?
We're gonna do that.
Okay. Okay, the next thing we have, we have a public hearing. It's in regards to rezoning request for Riley's Park subdivision from R two and B two to R two dash P D. Is anyone here to discuss that?
Minutes from that meeting should, from planning and zoning commission meeting should be in the pocket. And they did recommend, planning and zoning did recommend a change.
What does that mean? Not familiar at all?
It would be a multi-family planned development district, so it would allow them, so the new ordinance that we just passed last month regarding zero lot lines, this will allow them to build analysis of zero lot lines, so townhomes.
This is basically a rezoning request.
I got that part.
To go from R two, which it is now, to the R two P.
P D.
Which is, P D, which is the planned development for the zero lot lines. One of the owners is in the audience.
Any discussion? Do you need to give us anything?
I'll try to answer whatever questions you may have.
Anybody have any questions? I think first, drink the water, it was clean when it came through, really, I think, planning and zoning, so. Okay, so at this point, if there's no more discussion on that, are we all good here? On the order, ladies? Then we'll just have a general comment from citizens that all open up at this time for our meeting?
You need to close the hearing.
Oh, I apologize, yeah. So can I have a...
You just need to see.
Oh, okay, for closing the meeting for the public hearing on the, of the rezoning to, from B two to R two dash P D. Now, was that general comment from the citizens at this point?
Well, good evening. My name is Stephen Chance, I'm superintendent of Centennial School District. It's gonna sound crazy for me to say this, but four months of living here has not been enough time to meet all the people I need to meet, or want to meet. And this was the quickest way to knock out several people all at once. So I don't necessarily need anything, other than just to introduce myself. I'll have to complain about our middle school office area later, but poor Tara, she got the, she got the wrath of me, like, over the very first days, and I still feel bad about what I can admit. But in all seriousness, I have a very simple belief that when a community does well, a school district's gonna do well. And when a school district does well, the community's gonna do well. So we want to, from a school district standpoint, be a good neighbor, be a good friend. And if there are things that we can help with, if you feel like there are things that would be good opportunities for us to team up, we would love to hear about those, those chances, and to really kind of work together, demonstrate a little bit of unity. And at the end of the day, we're kind of all doing the exact same thing, we're, we just have a little bit different audiences. So I'm certainly open and eager to do anything that's new. I'll be honest, I don't know all of the traditions and the routines, and we've always done it this way type of things, so I often accidentally stand on stuff on the lane, I would say, but...
We'll pick you up on Friday night, take you up for a haze, and you'll be home Sunday.
Nice, nice, nice.
Bob, you didn't hear that over there.
I didn't hear nothing. No, I...
I knew a shiny thing about anything illegal going on. How many Zs are...
Something about kidnapping, I think, somewhere.
That's easy kidnapping?
It's just a retreat, that's pretty many.
Tom, not with that.
That would be something I would say. I, I've survived many of those team-building activities, so it definitely wouldn't hurt me one bit. But hey, seriously, I just wanted to thank you for that opportunity to speak to you tonight, introduce myself, and if there's anything we can do from a school district standpoint, please let us know, so.
Well, I guess your quick question, what, now that you've been here three, four months, and been drinking from the fire hose, what's your, what's the biggest surprise that you've had since moving to Centennial? You kind of usually know what you think you're getting into, and you have some ideas, it's really, it stands out to you.
Yeah, so, first off, I told everyone, there are no scary monsters hiding in any closets here. So there's, there's nothing lurking around a corner that's really gonna hurt us in terms of the community or school district, to be honest with you. Our, our biggest challenge from a district standpoint is going to be, there, there has been a real lack of attention on facilities. And so we, we know that it's gonna take kind of a planned approach, and it's probably not gonna be a one-year fixes everything type of approach. So we have talked from a district standpoint of putting together like a five-year plan, if we're calling it strategic plan, of the things that we want to be known for, the things that we want to see, the things that we want to do at the end of a five-year period. But the bulk of that's gonna be facility-related. We just, the reality, I mean, I just, I say this all the time, it is what it is. And the reality is, is we've got aged buildings that do need attention, that we can fix, but, but we can't continue to ignore. To do nothing is only gonna prolong the problem and make it worse. So outside of that, I've been very, been very encouraged by the things I've seen. Obviously, you know, the one thing that, unless you're in schools a lot, that is hard for people to understand when I tell them this, is that we've actually got really good kids here. And the example, and James and I said this the other night at the school meeting, go to the middle school during a passing period or a lunch shift. And while you might think it's chaos and disorganized, it is the most well-organized, well-behaved group of kids that I've ever seen in a middle school. And I think that says a lot, that the kids are, you know, they're friendly, respectful, they're willing to come up and talk to me. I've even had someone bribe me for a snow day. So they're not scared.
They're learning the selling skills, I'm good with that.
Yeah, and, and so I had reminded them that unfortunately, snow days cost a lot of money, so pony up, right? So, so, but it's, it's really been a good experience, and really are kind of anxious to get, to get started on some things, so.
Well, welcome and thank you.
Hey, thank you very much, it's nice meeting you. Thank you.
One thing that I want to thank you for is letting those high school kids come and help them put up the flags for Avenue of Flags and help them down. Young bodies are a whole lot better than the, already of the sixty and seventy-year-olds that are normally out there.
So one thing I'll tell everyone is we are labor-rich. So anytime you need things, just definitely give us a call, we're happy to help.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other comments from citizens at this time? If not, I'm gonna close with a comment from the citizens, and we'll move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda is providing the packet here.
Page seventy-seven of the minutes of the General Government Public Safety Committee meeting from last week. Mr. Wilkins was not here, so I don't think he called a middle meeting to order.
That would be true, I was on the phone today. So just a little typo, I want to get that fixed, I need to be aggressive. If you're doing the work, you should get your credit for it, right?
He could have had it, I...
Appreciate you bringing up your attention. Any other comments?
Did we accept the consent agenda?
Yeah.
With the changes?
Yeah, with the changes to seventy-seven, changing the name from Wilkins. I entertain most approved consent agenda as president, without change.
And will they accept it? Consent agenda with those changes?
Say it. The first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, we'll move on. Accounts payable over twelve hundred fifty dollars equals three hundred fifty-two thousand and fifty-six dollars and eight cents.
I have a question. Engineering Services is, billed us for another, or I guess we paid another three thousand dollars after we closed the project.
This was a, it was not after we closed the project. This was an invoice that we had missed paying them from July for the easement, the work that they had done already on the easements before we closed the project.
Did we ever get any easements from them?
Yes.
Okay, we all haven't signed very bad.
No, they were just working on descriptions.
If there's no other, I entertain motion approved of accounts payable over twelve hundred fifty dollars.
Moves that we approve the accounts payable over one thousand two hundred fifty, one thousand two hundred fifty dollars for a grand total of three hundred fifty-two thousand, fifty-six dollars and eight cents.
Say it. The first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Accounts payable is approved as presented. Now we're on to the action agenda. Finance, we don't have anything. Yeah, we do, we have, number one, authorize the transfer of six thousand eight hundred eighty dollars from the library debt service account to Centennial Public Library. I don't have a minute left, I swore, talked about it. For landscaping, I believe it'll be correct. Are any comments about requests for the funds for the library?
It stated at last meeting, it's their money, we just need to transfer.
I would entertain most approved payment of six hundred, six thousand eight hundred eighty dollars from the library debt service account to the Centennial Public Library.
So moved.
Say it. The first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The transfer to Centennial Public Library, amount of six thousand eight hundred eighty dollars is approved. To permits and licensing, we have them, we're on to the layman. Alderman Borman, would you read the title above, please?
For your order first. This is for the approval of the preliminary plat, right?
Does that...
We can't do that until after the rezoning has taken place.
So we need to change the order.
So we need to do two, then one, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll move down, and we will go to item two. Changing the zoning of certain lands in Centennial Missouri, Zone District R two and B two to Zone District R two, P D, amending the zoning map accordingly. Richard Warren, would you mind reading that, please?
Well, I can't vote on this, because I did the plat. So I'm not sure if it's appropriate for me to read it.
Well, if you're not gonna vote, I don't know how it's gonna affect you reading it.
But there's, there's also only three people here that can vote on it if I don't vote on it. And it takes four to pass an ordinance.
So it may not go to anyone, it's just gonna figure out that one, that one. Let's call it M one, right?
Yes.
Yes, because you can't participate in it.
Okay, so at this time, we'll be...
Everything will, item under legal, items one and two, include the next meeting in December.
I mean, it's not so much that...
Say it.
It's not so much that I can't vote on it, but I shouldn't vote.
Understood, I would agree.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So the first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Most and passively, we'll be naming items one and two.
Don, how does this affect our girls' project?
It won't.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Okay, so that lays us under...
I mean, let me explain to you that the final plat has been turned in along with plans, and they are starting construction on that, because it's already been approved by planning and zoning, and it's more of a formality now at this point to get it done. So Tom was asking whether or not this will affect anything going forward. It should not affect anything going forward. It's just a matter of the formal process will not take place until there's enough people there going on to approve it.
I was gonna say, I was like, yeah, because the, technically, I mean, not technically, legally, just because planning and zoning provides an approval or a recommendation to this body, this body still has to pass a by ordinance before it's official. But, I mean, I don't disagree with Alderman Borman. I don't know what your timetable is, but the classification hasn't changed, so it's possible that you don't get four votes. I mean, I don't think anybody up here should commit to telling you that you're going to get the four votes and tell everybody who's in here to vote.
Well, preliminary plat will be approved regardless of the rezoning. Yeah, there's a little weight on that. But I don't anticipate anybody voting against it either.
What we're doing out there now is all preliminary. It won't, we're not selling lots, we're not delegating this time.
It is construction.
It's putting in streets, sewers, and...
I would just say that the disclaimer at this point is, until we have voted, any work you do would not be accepted work that could come back on us as a government, because we haven't approved yet, would be the point, right?
Nothing that we're doing out there right now wouldn't be acceptable under the term zoning.
As long as you continue to that manner, anything that would not, is what I would say. We, you know, we're gonna make sure we clear that. I don't want you taking undue risks, just because of the fact that we have to absolutely vote on the recommendation, and at that point, it would be...
And we've been to the public hearing, and now it's to you all.
Sure, that's where we're at.
Right, so there won't be another public hearing.
Just to make the statement, a public statement that, giving you knowledge of that, okay?
We understand.
Got you. Fair enough, okay. So we're on... So we're on to under legal under three, amending section twenty-six dash one twelve of the Code of the City of Centennial, Missouri regarding delinquent payment dash service disconnection, reconnection of service ordinance. Don, can I get you to read this one?
Yeah.
You've done that too.
No, no, please. Two, three, one, eight. I move that bill number two, three, one, eight be given its first reading by Title only.
Aye. The first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
All right. An ordinance amending section twenty-six dash one-one-two of the Code of the City of Centennial, Missouri regarding delinquent payment, service disconnection, reconnection service. I move that bill number twenty-three, eighteen be given its secondary by Title only.
Aye. The first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
An ordinance amending section twenty-six dash one-one-two of the Code of the City of Centennial, Missouri regarding delinquent payment, service disconnection, reconnection of service. I move that bill number twenty-one, thirty-eight be adopted by Roll Call Board.
Aye. The first and the second, if you can take Roll Call, please, Sarah.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Motley, S., Alderman Magley?
Yep.
Alderman Borman?
Yes.
Passes?
Orders, Kevin?
Three, zero, three, two.
Thank you. Now we're going to move to purchasing. We're looking at authorizing the first is a twenty-two cents of turnout gear for the Centennial Fire Department, a motion of that.
I know we talked about this last two, last month, or last meeting, and talked about spending the eighty thousand for that. I don't think we should spend the eighty on that. I mean, eventually we're going to need a new truck, a different truck, and that eighty thousand would be pretty good down payment on a truck instead of buying...
However, the fund that it comes from isn't for equipment, it's for, isn't for fire trucks, it's for...
It's for both.
It's for both?
It's for life saving equipment, because it was a donation that we received.
I mean, that's my opinion.
The question is, where would we fund it? I mean, right now, we have guys who are out there, volunteers who don't have the proper equipment. That's a concern. I hear you and I agree. There's in the back of my mind going, okay, we're going to have to buy another truck.
But wasn't there a payment thing, Heather, on that?
There was. It was like a three-point-eight interest rate. We did it. We could do it in two payments. Let me grab my letter book real quick.
Sure. So we're talking about a fifty-nine thousand dollar cost with this twenty-two cents.
And we had about eighty-seven hundred, I think was the number. Some number over eighty thousand. Yeah.
That's what I remember.
This eats up most of it. Well, I hear you. Wait a minute, it's in the back of my mind.
Because right now, they ain't got trucks that takes the people up two-story buildings.
Yeah, but on the other side, we got guys who not, don't have the proper equipment today.
Well, I understand, but I mean, we can do payments instead of...
So you're talking, there's three-point-eight percent interest, is what you're telling me, there's a finance plan that somebody provides us for this project?
Banner does.
Banner does? Okay, so you can buy it out like for fifty-nine, you can finance it all in all. For three-point-eight percent.
Actually, it's four-point-six-nine percent.
So four-point-seven percent, basically.
Financing it for, finance it, that it can be paid off before the next fiscal year?
It's actually three years.
The question I would have is, what would build that fund, drive that payment money through the fire department fund? Tax revenues? Is my question.
What would drive that payment?
Yeah, I mean, if we've got the money in the bank, we're going to make payments, it's, are we talking about...
It would probably come out of what we would budget annually from the public safety sales tax money for equipment.
That's what I'm asking.
So this year, we've budgeted, actually, if he, no, when I talked to Denny, he said that they could hold off on the SCBA equipment and that we could possibly look at the grant for that if we wanted to. So we have fifty-one thousand five hundred dollars currently in this fiscal year that we could spend on it.
How much?
Fifty-one thousand five hundred. If we use the twenty-four thousand we had budgeted for SCBAs that he's not going to use and the twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars that they budgeted for half of the turnout gear. I think we could just pay it.
Which would leave, so what would that leave for this fiscal year's budget, right? Knowing that we're...
It's seventy-five hundred dollars, so we could, I mean, would you be opposed to using seventy-five hundred out of that eighty thousand, eighty-seven thousand?
Well, that leaves a big chunk there, is my point. And we don't, and with that group, we don't have to worry so much of a natural disaster or something costing us budget money. All of a sudden, we're not paying on it, fiscal year's a little safer, yeah, not all of it, but, I mean, unless the whole thing's gone, but that's what we've got insurance for, from a tornado or something, right? So I mean, I mean, it's a safer, it's just, the risk mitig, it is mitigated quite a bit. There's, it's a low risk to do that, to take the seven thousand to me, and we hadn't paid for it, I paid for it, what, six, nine percent interest. If it doesn't rob and deplete that budget, it does it too much. It's a little less than ten percent. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, I'd rather do that than spend all of it out of that fund.
I think that makes sense too, myself, but...
And there is only one quote in your packet. Denny did check around, tried to find some place, asked to give him a quote on the full sets of gear, and he just, he couldn't find another provider that would do that.
Only thing he could find is out of a magazine.
Yeah, and he had to do it together.
Measure every person.
Yeah.
Well, there's business to do that, you know, so much, it's not broker, product, but as a specialist and technical expert in the business. That's what you want. You've got to be fitted properly, at least fall protection or whatever they be, so harnessing and all that kind of stuff, so. It's critical that we deal with the right people, these kind of things. So now, I guess what, any other discussion about at this point of what we've talked about? So we would use the proposed budget, budgeted money of fifty-one thousand dollars?
Fifty-one thousand five hundred.
Okay, fifty-one thousand five hundred dollars and adding out of the fund, the existing fund, the seventy...
Seventy-five hundred.
Seventy-five hundred dollars difference. I would entertain a motion, doing it that way, to reach the fifty-nine thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
I have a first and a second. This is the purchase of the turnout gear of the Centennial Department. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So the purchase of the turnout gear for the Centennial Fire Department from Banner Equipment, now fifty-nine thousand dollars has been approved and so stipulated for the monies. Next, authorizing the approval from Visu Sewer for manhole relocation. I open it up for discussion.
We talked about this last week. This was kind of an emergency situation. Mike is very worried about this specific manhole. Afraid that it really could cave in at the same time you have hand craters, and it's already creating some sinkhole areas, so the sooner the better. And it was not budgeted, and that's why it needs approval at this price.
Well, eleven thousand dollars, not much money if you have a lawsuit.
That's a lot of money for a manhole though.
Well, I don't know what they have to do, I'm just saying. I mean, something you have to face is risk management here.
I understand that. You could replace it for less money, probably.
You say they can't. I don't think so.
Other than the problems of digging around it, I realize there are some problems there, so if I did quite...
Yeah, we have so much, there's so much stuff packed in there that we run a lot of risk getting into something else and...
There's water, gas, and all of that in there.
All. And you could easily get in an extra four or five thousand dollars worth of labor over the course of schedule. I mean, if you had to shut service off, tie in, cut, cut out to get to it, you know, I mean, if it affected any of those utility centers like we might thought. But now, I'm not an expert in seeing, I just know that what Mike was telling us and how close and proximity, all that stuff's mixed in there together, if I'm remembering correctly.
Yeah. Based on Mike's recommendation, I move that we accept the quote from Visu Sewer to replace this for eleven thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Aye. I have a first and a second to approve the eleven thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars for the manhole relocation by Visu Sewer. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Pardon me, sir. Did you say replace or relocate?
Rehabilitation.
Rehabilitation. Rehabilitation of a manhole. So it passed, for Visu Sewer, for manhole rehabilitation, an amount of eleven thousand seven hundred dollars has been approved. Any old business at this time? Okay, I'll close the old business. New business, I don't have any appointments from the mayor, so we'll go to the city ministerator. One, the city ministerator's monthly report for October twenty-nineteen. Questions that we had noticed in the hearing? Any questions on the monthly report? Okay. How about the notice of the public care and conditional use permit application for VRVO?
This is really just for your information. This will be on the planning and zoning agenda for December fourth.
Is this the only item on that agenda?
No, there is the three, there are three rezoning requests from Darren Adams. I think I included that in last week's packet for rezoning. The trailer court, because he withdrew his rezoning request, one requested written on, both, all on the same page, he withdrew everything. So he's requesting rezoning from R1 to R3, the same locations, the trailer court at Lakeview and Allen, and then the...
Alco.
The lot at Alco and Allen, he's not asking rezoning for the trailer court part of it, but there is a lot, yeah, there's a lot that's still connected to it included in that, but it has a shed on it right now. I think it's seventy by a hundred and five feet. So rezoning of that one lot and then the whole entire lot behind that's on Allen and jump a circle that has the old house on it.
So it's an L-type situation, right?
Yeah.
We've learned something on that too, how to present that stuff, because he, it was, we had to vote on all of it or none of it. I mean, either you got it for all the properties that were submitted under at one, or we couldn't, we couldn't dissect it like happened through the planning and zoning. You got to look at it as two different entities, and it couldn't be, it'd be just one, one application for all the properties to be resolved at courts with what he's asking for, the first, the good, with it. So thus, he's had to refile, and so we've got three different properties back square one where we started. A little frustrating, but we'll go. So...
This doesn't go till December fourteenth, right?
Fourth.
Fourth, December fourth.
Yeah, and in order to get it in, into the fifteen-day notice period, I did have to publish it in the Tribune tomorrow, and it's in the guard on Wednesday.
The meeting's when, December fourth?
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought we moved it to the fourteenth.
I thought we did too, but...
I thought we got an email.
On the eleventh?
I didn't, no.
Okay, sorry. Let's go from, we've been on that. I'll come to that.
But speaking of the eleventh, I would like to have a preliminary budget meeting with the board, so if you all have, if you're available, December eleventh, it would be Wednesday, please let me know. I was looking at the second or third or the eleventh, and the mayor's gone on the second and the third, so...
Yeah, I've got a set week, but I can't help it. I do have a day job that I've got to do sometimes.
I assume that the final plat will be on the, for Riley Park, will be on the fourth also.
The final plat, did you send me a final plat?
Yeah.
You've got lots of planning and zoning meetings this year. Or the benefactor or something?
Several.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll do it again. He'll re-pass the fourth about a day time there.
So, all right, anything else, then we'll move to our city attorney. Any questions with you?
Yeah, very quickly, two things. You're going to see a whole lot of planning and zoning next year. So Heather and I have kind of gotten together because we've ran into some snafus this year with regarding to the application and some other things. Your planning and zoning code is woefully out of date, and there are a lot of improvements, a lot of vague language in there that I think drives difficulty in how you manage your planning and zoning hearings, how developers address your city. This is a growing city. You need to have a clear planning and zoning code. So next year, I've talked to Heather, we are going to undertake the task of completely redoing your planning and zoning code and present that to the board as we move forward. Part, parcel, one of the more immediate ordinances that will be addressed is a rezoning ordinance. You have no clear rezoning ordinance. Like many cities will have an application procedure, an application fee, and basically outlining when rezoning can occur in the process for rezoning. So like the city of Fulton, for example, has a really solid rezoning ordinance that Heather and I have looked at, and that will probably drive the discussion here within the next couple of months, but it's not going to be a small task, and it's not necessarily going to be an easy one, and there will need to be input on it, but it needs to be addressed. So that's our goal for next year.
This is going to be something that's ongoing as you grow as a city.
We were talking more about the zoning, right?
Correct, more about the zoning code. A couple of planning and zoning, I just used the word, but yeah, looking at rezoning ordinances in particular, so. Columbia will be driving it too, taking a look at Boone County as a whole, so that the city can be more flexible, more responsive, and again, more up to date with the current times. And then the last thing is, is just a reminder, I will be out on medical leave starting December the tenth, and I will be out until January the tenth. Heather will be able to contact me and email me four days after surgery, but during that four days, I will pretty much be out and unavailable. So I will work with her in case something does come up, get a suggestion for like an attorney if you guys need to have somebody to call if something really truly urgent in those four or five days comes up, that somebody can provide some legal coverage during that time.
I would just say that when you guys are thinking about the zoning application fees, that it's an expensive process for us as a city, so we've talked about that, whatever that have, and if somebody's wanting something rezoned, to me, they're wanting for personal interest to benefit themselves. If that's the case typically, which I'm going to guarantee nine-nine-hundred times, that's the reason, they need to pay for it. I must say, it's something ridiculous, but I don't believe it should be fifty or cents a dollar either. I think it should be fairly stiff them out just to help offset and cover our costs, because we have a lot of bit of time and paper, it's got a lot of papers, a lot of things, and it'll be a cost to us to benefit, it does benefit the city, and we're willing to be involved in that, so I ask somebody to pay us to consider that. We're asking to help offset some of our costs.
So at least cover anything we have to pay. The labor internal, you can say some of that's tax dollars paying for it.
Sure.
Anything we got to pay, the guard that was mentioned last time, look at it, you take.
Well, it's a means we have to use, it's a cost, it's appropriate, so I mean, at the same time, I don't think we should eat that to help benefit somebody. Even if it might benefit the city too as well, I get that.
Most places do require a payment for those fees. The fact that we don't have anything in there, does that require a public vote in order to put that in place?
It's not a tax, it's a fee, so it doesn't require a vote, it's not a tax.
The Hancock Amendment, we discussed the fees and stuff.
I discussed the Hancock Amendment, I get it, but I guarantee you, this is considered a fee, it is not a tax. If I need to put a legal agreement on that, I will. I'm very confident this is not a tax.
You can ask me, so, right now, anyway, but what I'd say is we wish you the best in your upcoming surgery, thanks for this, so we appreciate you. Get well quick when you have it done, so.
I hope so.
All right, we'll move on now to our city clerk.
Let me all this down.
There you go. I know you are. I know you are. So, uh, we're at the point now, uh, we need to go into a closed session, uh, the reason we're going to a closed session is number one, uh, was for legal action, uh, discussion, and it's, it's listed, it's section six, ten, dot, point, zero, two, one, uh, is what we're gonna go into closed session for. So.
Subsection one, just to be clear.
Yeah, subsection one, yeah, I'll, yes, you did correct, yeah, thanks. So. Alderman, uh.
Me? I'll do it.
Motley?
Just number one.
Just number one. During the meeting, the board of Alderman may elect to go into closed session and hold a closed vote, and a purpose of such closed session and closed vote shall be, number one, as provided for under section six, ten, point, zero, two, one, subsection one, with the revised statutes of Missouri for legal actions, causes of action, or litigation involving a public governmental body, and any confidential or privileged communication between a public governmental body or its representatives and its attorneys.
Second.
I have a first and a second, uh. Do we have to do roll call for this one?
Yes.
I need a roll call, roll call, please.
Alderman Borman?
Yes.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Motley?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yep.
All right, we're gonna retire in closed session, uh, don't think it'll be. Well, are you gonna pave my road or not?
Maybe not.
I swear you people. Listen, I wish, that's.
Wow.
She's right. He lives eight miles out of town, sir.
Yeah, yeah, listen.
So you can spot some backwards.
I, I thought you were talking about Allen's.
So.